Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors for our special meeting of August 24th, 2007. Would you please join, can we have roll call and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Floyd?
Here.
Supervisor Bennett?
He's stepped out for a moment.
Senator Clark?
I'm here also.
And Mr. Nelson.
Hey, are you here?
I'm here, thanks Gary.
Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is our time for public comments. Do you have any public comment cards?
Yes, here I put one there.
Okay, and this one I see for item eight, so there's no, if anyone would like to submit a card for public comments now would be the time. Not seen any, we'll go on to, we have board comments and then also a couple of regular agenda items. Supervisor Lynn, would you like to start with your board comment?
No comments, thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, just like to welcome everybody back and I'm gonna be glad to hear this update on the Zaca fire. I know the Fire Department, Sheriff's Department done a great job of keeping this thing contained from roaring into Ventura County. It's probably the longest lead time we've ever had, sort of, we had a 10-day in advance warning meeting and a five-day in advance and all that stuff, so anyway, thanks, great work both of you.
Supervisor Floyd, did you have any comments?
I too want to welcome them back and I wanted to say I'm glad you guys are taking this whole month off, I didn't know that we were all taking a month off, but the paper said that, as we were in our office till 7:30 that night. But I do want to thank the Fire Department for what they're doing.
Some triple time?
Is that what it was? No, I guess, so anyway, but they're doing a great job, we took a helicopter tour and I want to thank the chief for showing us what's going on and all the good work they're doing, so, thank you.
Thank you, and Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. I have two things, one, ask adjourned in memory for Santa Paula resident Doris Circe Pitts, and I only bring that to the board because one, this just occurred, but she was quite a remarkable woman and known by many, both her family, for the Circes and for the Pitts, longtime history in this county, and she lived over, to over 100 years of age and was just a remarkable woman, and I know that she has a very expansive family and that she'll be very missed, so I wanted to bring that to the board today. And then one other quick thing, up at CSAC yesterday for the executive board meeting, lots of discussion obviously about the budget that now has been at least passed by the legislative leadership, that the governor is supposed to have a 11 o'clock press conference today to sign off components of it, we know that there's 750 million that will, is probably going to face his wicked pen, lots of still concern and I hope our agencies as soon as the action's taken, we really get a good analysis of what it means to us locally, still issues impacting Health and Human Services, Adult Protective Services, and CSAC sent a letter over to the governor highlighting the areas of concern we have for homeless adults, the Williamson Act, juvenile offenders, Prop 36, and the Adult Protective Services Program, so we'll wait and see what he does at 11 o'clock this morning.
Thank you. It has been a busy few weeks and much of it because of the Zaca fire, but also was able to attend a wonderful seminar yesterday on emergency management and disaster preparedness, the sheriff was there and it really had a really good turnout and it was very beneficial and it's kind of a continuing effort on our county to better ourselves and looking at models of other counties and finding out that they're all looking at us as being a model in emergency preparedness and response. Also had the unique pleasure of being invited to Santa Barbara and watching their briefing at their emergency operating center on the Zaca fire. Supervisor Firestone, who's their chair of the board, invited me up there and it was very interesting to see their presentation and then also realizing in comparison to our county, how experienced we are and I just was very impressed with our county staff. I know that we had sent, and we'll probably hear from our fire chief too, we also had sent some people to Santa Barbara County to assist them, so it's nice to be that resource in our region. I also had the ability to attend my first planning director hearing on a project in Newberry Park and I was also extremely impressed, Nancy Francis was the hearing officer and I think did an excellent job and it's nice to see our staff doing so well and I think the residents really appreciated to be able to speak and be heard, so I just wanted to mention that. I'd also ask that, I have a request to adjourn in memory of, and one who I'd like to call out is Van Ruiz, who was the young boy in Newberry Park, a five-year-old that had been murdered and just such a shock to our community and everyone's rallying around to, you know, do whatever we can, but it was just so shocking and everybody is just very upset about it and I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that young life. So with that then, we can move on to the rest of our agenda. And our first item then will be our receiving and filing the status report on the Zaca fire and Chief Roper, you'll be doing this?
Good morning, Madam Chair members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Bob Roper, Fire Chief. I'll give you a quick status report because I want to be, at first tell you that the fire is not out yet, so this is only a status report. The Zaca fire started up in Santa Barbara County up off of Zaca Lake Road and it progressed in an easterly direction and a long finger, if you may have seen on some of the maps, toward Ventura County and the lower Santa Barbara County.
Can I ask you a question for you, in terms of the cause of the fire? Do we know whose property that was on and will they be responsible for any parts of this?
Yeah, the Cal Fire and the US Forest Service will be going after cost recovery on it, they do know whose property it is, I don't have that information to tell you, but they do know, they know how it was started, starting by a grinding operation by some ranch workers and so there will be some litigation on this, I'm sure.
Thanks.
The, the one thing I need to, just make sure everybody understands is the situation leading up to the fire, every year we take our live fuel moisture readings, okay, this is where we take samples of brush and we dry it out, we try to learn what percentage of that brush is moisture. Normally during the height of the winter it gets up to about 160% of live fuel moisture. Our critical level has always been about 60 and usually we don't drop much below 60. We're down less than 50 and some areas of the fire it was down to about 39%. At 30% of live fuel moisture, the brush is determined to be absolutely dead, it doesn't go below 30. So you can see our fuels situation is very critical this time of year and it gets worse every day until the rain comes back to get moisture back into the fuels. The other thing they had was just a high-pressure system set up over the four corners of the country and it caused high temperatures over the area. At one day, two weeks ago on a Sunday, we had relative humidities down to 1% and that's really been unheard of to have, how dry it was. We all know about the rain situation in the area. This map is a map from the Forest Service, on July 31st, they call it's a relative greenness of the United States and you can see when the red areas are is where it's dry. A week later, you can see it changes dramatically and that's on the Midwest areas where all the rain started hitting, but in Southern California, we just got even drier. The fire today has burned about 230,000 acres, it's now the second largest wildfire in California history, about 12,000 acres of that is in Ventura County and that's primarily up around the Pine Mountain going down to Ozina Ranger Station, Lockwood Valley Road in that area where most of that acreage occurred. Crews constructed about 270 miles of line, that line is by hand lines and also dozer lines that they had to put into the area. There was only one outbuilding destroyed, at the height of fire was about 3,200 employees. Cost of the fire to date is 94.2 million, it's probably going to be one of the highest cost fires also in California. For the fire district, our cost out of pocket is about $50,000. At one time, we had a little over 100 people assigned to the fire, from overhead positions to being on fire engines. This is the, the fire itself, this is that long tail and Zaca Lake is back over at this area. The fire moved in this direction and then just kind of stayed still for a while and then it blew up this direction and then it started moving east. The areas of concern was Santa Barbara front country, you have the San Yenés River drainage with Lake Cuchuma over here, and if a fire was to cross the San Yenés River drainage, it gets up to the mountains above Santa Barbara and historically, when a fire goes up there, it comes down into Santa Barbara quickly. The fire hasn't been there since 1968 around Montecito, so there's extreme concern there. This is Matilla Wilderness, Matilla Lake and Canyon is right here and we've been on enough fires there, we know that when the fire enters into the Matilla Canyon area, it moves quickly toward Ojai and down Canyon. This is the Pine Mountain area, Highway 33, Lockwood Valley Road runs off this way. Today what's happening is the fire there is what we call contained in all this area up to about here, they're finishing off today and tomorrow on the Highway 33 going down to Ozina Ranger Station. The area that is really troublesome is up in this northwest corner, this is in the Sisquik River Drainage. This is in a wilderness area, it's very steep, the crews can't get in there, there's no roads, this area is still going to burn for quite a while. So there, everybody in the public will still see heads of smoke coming up, it's primarily going to be from that northwest corner for days to come. The fire behavior started in the mornings, the fire would lay down as some of the humidities came up overnight, by noon the flame front started, by 3:00 PM you would start seeing the heads of the smoke and by 6 o'clock in the evening, this thing was off to the races and it burnt close to about midnight before the humidities came back up and then it laid back down again. This is just a picture of standing behind the Matilla Wilderness area, there was an eight-mile flame front on last Thursday as it was coming up, this Agua Caliente Drainage on the Santa Barbara County side, coming up toward Matilla, back Matilla Canyon. Crews put this dozer line, put a line in here and I'll show you some other pictures, what we actually did is they were able to introduce fire on this side as a fire's coming this way and it was able to draw the two fires together and that's how the tactics worked to stop this fire. When there's a large-scale fire, working with the Forest Service, we draw a big box around. This is actually Lake Cuchuma here, Lake Cedas, and what they do is they start drawing where could the fire grow and so the earlier reports out of the Forest Service is that this fire could go to 800,000 acres and it could if nothing else was to stop it. Part of our strategy, the only way to deal with this without any roads is to go up and create some fuel breaks and we have to do that by setting backfires and a lot of planning goes into that and we use helicopters, a heli-torch hanging below, a machine that drops ping-pong balls that have injected chemical that ignites and then from the ground we use what we call terror torches. This is just an example along the ridge lines, some of the dozer roads that were put in, this is actually the road that runs between Pine Mountain at the top of Highway 33, it's called Petraero Seco, and it's also called Monte Arido on the maps, and it runs all the way down to the back behind Matilla Canyon, okay? When the fire is all done and it's starting even today, the Forest Service is putting crews in and all the scars from all the dozer lines get erased, okay, we return it back to where it was before the fire, it's part of the rehab process. What they ended up doing was taking in, a helicopter was working up here as that fire last Thursday was coming in, the helicopter would introduce fire high up on the hill, then there's a pickup truck here and these were Ventura County crews down here that were spraying like a flamethrower, fire from the road up. What they also have is what we call compressed air foam systems, these are specialized equipment that we bring in and they shoot a sudsy, diss soap type foam on this side of the road, that is, in case any embers were to cross, they can square it out about 100 feet to keep an ignition from crossing because there's a whole lot of fire there that we want to make sure stays on the right side of the road. Also, there's a lot of controversy why the DC-10 wasn't flying early on the fire, there were some political issues among the Forest Service Agency and stuff, a lot of those things were resolved, the DC-10 was flying quite a bit on this fire and a lot of people think just because this is the new sexy toy, if it flies, it can drop, it'll put out the fire and that doesn't happen. In the wilderness area, this was quite successful at knocking down the fire, but to extinguish the fire, we have to put crews in those, into those hard-to-reach areas to actually cut off the fire still and we have a safety issue putting people into those remote areas without a safety island to escape to if the fire was to blow up, so it's a very coordinated thing, so we're wanting to make sure that the public understands, we can bring in a whole lot more, there's only one of these in the United States, okay, and even if we had 20 of them, this would not put out the fire, we still have to put people on the ground. Part of our planning efforts on August 7th, this is a computer model map that basically it takes in the fuel, the topography and the weather conditions and splits out a map and this map takes into effect if we took no action at all, where would the fire go in a period of days? So the red area is basically two to three days and it goes out to the yellow to the blue, which would be seven to nine days and so some of the information I provided to the board was, the projections are showing the fire could be here in this number of days and that information is based on the computer model. In reality, the fire moved a little slower, which was a good thing, than what the model was showing, but this is some of the technology. The only good thing about having a fire that burns so many days and using federal resources, we get federal technology, okay? This was a drone that NASA made available to us and it flew the Thursday that the fire came in, okay? This was the one piece of key intel information that we had to tell us where the fire was so they could begin the backfiring operation. Without this, we would have been blinded by the smoke, okay? And so this was a great piece of technology and we ended up asking, went to Sue Hughes and Major Boarder where we had to go back through Congress to have, asked NASA to bring this thing back out because it is not part of the US Forest Service fleet of tools, so there's some partnerships being created, but that's what was going on about contacting NASA. This is actually the map, this is launched, the drone is launched from Edwards Air Force Base, it's pre-programmed, this was the route it takes and it sends back real-time on the web, we were able to pick up the dots as where the heat progression was on Thursday when the fire was blowing up. This is actually the infrared map, the drone flies at 40,000 feet and it provides us live pictures coming back so we actually know where the hotspots are. Impacts to the public, smoke, recreation, watershed, we're quite fortunate that most of this fire is the, burned out the, didn't bother the Ventura County watershed, but there will be a great impact to Lake Cuchuma and the Santa Barbara County watershed and it's unforeseen yet what's going to be the outcome of the Sisquik River Drainage. Law enforcement was instrumental, this was one of these fires that I, it's hard to express to everybody that maybe Ventura County escaped so far that it was only 12,000 acres out of 230,000 acres total, but the potential, if it got into the Matilla Drainage and so forth, was for another 100 to 200,000 acres and that would have been in Ventura County. So the economic impact, not only to the fire, but to our watershed, agriculture and so forth, could have been great if it would have happened that way. But we had the time, working with law enforcement, it worked out great.
I have a question, Lake Cedas there will not be affected with runoff?
No, absolutely not. But working with law enforcement, a lot of great planning went on for the structure protection as well as the evacuation plan, so people in Ventura County were able to express at the community meetings that we had plans in place. Big thing is, I, we build every year on what we learned from past experiences and, okay, so just quickly, from what we learned from the day fire from last year, two key areas, public information and incident management. Incident management, this, last year on the day fire, large fire, the federal government, we brought in incident overhead teams, which some of my staff is part of, on this fire we brought in three because of the impact of it and Thursday we brought in that third one to deal with the Ventura County end. We had our structure protection plans in place, but we didn't have a strong incident management structure in place if the fire came in, how to get resources, so last week the Forest Service agreed with me and we opened up the fairgrounds and that was a staging location in case the fire came into Santa Barbara or Ventura County, we could bring enough resources in so we, as a planned event, instead of being reactive and having to wait for all the resources to get here, so it worked out well. The other thing on communication is, we started early on setting up two what we call sandwich boards at the supermarkets in Ojai. Every day, you could see a half dozen people reading those, their people were hungry for information, worked with the city of Ojai to update their website, the sheriff's website, our website, and we linked back to all these other websites so people were getting information. Supervisor Bennett hosted the community meeting in Ojai, it was well-attended and we had two more after that that were very well-attended. The other thing that we worked as the PIOs in Ventura County, started the Joint Information Center here, which has been a model of communication and cooperation, so we send out one consistent message to the people in the county, which was reassuring. The other thing we're beginning to recognize after last year was, we call it citizen journalism or the blogs, okay, and we have found that we cannot withhold information as a fire is moving because if we don't tell people what's happening, the blogs will. So we're now reaching out and trying to give out all the information we can to make sure that we don't have somebody off to the side creating doom and gloom or bad information. The other thing we did this year, because this fire even went longer than the day fire, we began to see in Ojai the anxiety level of people, which sometimes turns to depression. So I asked Scott Berry of the County's Employee Assistance Program to give us a professional input into the communication message that we give to the public and because sometimes we use jargon, we use terms we think everybody understands, but we wanted a professional to give us certain words to use, how to present messages to really reassure the public and so Scott was very good at that. Our cooperators, working with the sheriff, Sheriff's OES, the CHP, Red Cross was, didn't open a shelter in Ventura County, but the Red Cross was supporting the shelter operations in Santa Barbara County, okay, and plans were in place for the precautionary evacuations that Kern County Red Cross was going to open in the Fraser Park area to support. APCD, I have to just mention that Kent Fields from APCD was providing me daily and even on the weekends, weather reports and, because we always use primary national weather and I always rely on Kent to give me what's really happening in spot weather and he's always been great. Kathy James, Animal Regulations, Water Protection District, we worked with because they had a 100-person crew working at the back of Matilla Canyon on the Arundo Removal Project, so we were having to work with them, but just keep them up to date what's happening on the fire. And then the city, your board, and the CEO staff on helping with the, contacting our federal legislatures on NASA and stuff worked well. And then Dr. Levin and the Public Health Department, we worked with them and APCD and he was issuing health advice reasons, so forth, on certain days. And then between the fire agencies and Caltrans, the situation worked probably as good as it could have in realizing the fire didn't get here in Ventura County. That's what I have presented, if you have any questions, I'm available.
I just wanted to thank you for the, coming with me to Santa Barbara, I learned a lot both from you and from Santa Barbara and I know their fire chief there, just out of their professional dignity, wanted not to have this fire cross into our county and they did do a good job. You realize, most of the effort on this was just trying to channel it away from, you know, the human habitat and that, that was excellent, the way they were doing that and looking also at the threat to Montecito and, and a lot of that, from my understanding, was that they had had a previous fire nearby beyond Montecito that kept the fire from eating up the new vegetation, that it wasn't as, I guess tasty as the old dry brush, so it really scored for me, the fact that it's important to have those burns, you know, to prevent fires, so, and that's obviously what's being used to move it and I'm glad to see the success that you had. I wonder if you'd like to comment, you know, when we were talking about the DC-10s and obviously they carry a lot of water, but that there's, there may be some other impacts associated with them with turbulence or something with the wind when they do come by?
Okay, but the supervisor's talking about, if, everybody thinks that the DC-10 is this panacea will solve everything, but one of the things, as the DC-10 comes in, it creates such turbulence in the area that any of the other fixed wing or helicopters cannot enter that airspace for about 10 to 15 minutes till the turbulence calms down. Sometimes that is okay, but the fire's really moving, we need to get resources in, it hurts us. The other thing they're studying right now is that turbulence, the effect on the fire, what happens. And the DC-10, if you weren't aware, three months ago, it was on a fire over, off the Tehachapi's and it clipped a tree, okay? The trees in that area are not 200-foot trees, we're talking down to, you know, 80 feet and the DC-10 came down, hit its own downdraft, clipped a tree and I have pictures of the wing, it's remarkable that the thing could even land, okay, it was rebuilt and put here. So the DC-10 is still very experimental and it came in early on on this fire to fly two test flights to make sure it was still airworthy, okay?
You're saying it also takes like a spotter plane in front of it, so each time it flies, it's got a companion?
Okay, there's, what happened on this fire was, as the DC-10 comes in, it comes in so quick, they have to have a lead plane, a great distance in front of it to give it the path that it has to follow. The interesting story here is this lead plane was coming into this fire and it hit a bird, okay, took out the engine on the lead plane. The lead plane had to make a landing and the DC-10 couldn't, it had nowhere to go, so it had to just dump its load and fly back to Victorville and it was grounded for several days until they could get another lead plane. So it's some of the complications of using the technology.
A lot of things to learn from each incident that we have. I, I think overall, you know, the public is concerned with the amount of money that is spent on this, particularly this fire, it's probably one of the highest expended fires in the nation and I'm, I'm wondering if you can comment on that, if, maybe this would be something that we can look at in the future to see, you know, how we may have been able, and obviously it wasn't Ventura County, but how some of those costs could have been contained a little better?
Yeah, I think, you know, just to put it in perspective, the US Forest Service does not have a contingency fund, okay, when a fire breaks, they have to fight all these fires out of their budget, so when a large fire happens, what they have to do is sacrifice some of their recreation programs and their ongoing programs within the US Forest Service until they can get augmentation money back out of Congress. And so the Forest Service is quite concerned about cost containment and the future information I'll share with your board as we're working on this project as a national level.
Thank you. Other comments Supervisor Lynn?
I just have a question, can you discuss the impact on wild animals? I know we have domestic animals that, where there's cooperation, but can you see them moving, wild animals away from the fire?
Yeah, in some of the, wherever we have a fire, we also put out what we call field observers that are ahead of the fire and they actually spot and make notes about the type of animals that are moving and so forth. This fire, because of the terrain and there was enough lead time, they felt comfortable that a lot of animals were able to leave, but there is quite a bit of devastation on the interior of this fire because of the heat, the intensity that this fire caused.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, just make, you, you talked about how other counties are envious of us, I guess that's a bittersweet situation, we've had so much experience with this that each time you get better and better at it, but it certainly is comforting to just see how professional all the work and all the coordination is, Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, everybody else, so again, I really appreciate it and it seems like it's always Ojai that we're, you know, we're, you know, it's the day fire and it's Ojai. we're, you know, it's the day fire, and it's Ojai, and it's, uh, coming this way, it's Ojai, and I know the people in Ojai are very appreciative of it, so thank you very much.
Without making an editorial on Santa Barbara County, the only thing I can tell you, as being involved in this incident and so forth, I can tell you, I'm extremely proud of all the partners, of Sheriff's OES, law enforcement, animal regulation, the way we work together, and the way our operation is, it is something we should all be proud of. And it's coincidental, yesterday's meeting was addressing how we can improve that.
I really second that, I mean, that's what I see consistently over the years, and I'm sorry that I haven't been here very long, but I feel like I'm veteran of these things, and that's, that's not a good sign.
Thank you, and, um, for all the work that the fire department does, um, they are relieved a little bit, because we have the sheriff's department running the emergency operating center, our OES, and, um, and I, and obviously got some great response with, um, your declaration if Sheriff Brooks would like to come up, we have the item seven, which is the ratification approval of the proclamation.
Good morning, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson, Bob Brooks, Sheriff. Just want to make a couple of comments about the evacuation, uh, law enforcement response, and the Office of Emergency Services' role in responding to this fire, and then we'll, then we'll, uh, deal with the, the ratification of the proclamation. Captain Bruce Norris, uh, who's our contract city manager, and also wears a county hat in the Ojai area, was responsible for putting together the evacuation plans for the Ozina area. Uh, he was using the, the tactical response team, which are basically twenty-five deputies that we pull out of other jobs, but they're trained to do these kinds of things. Uh, the search and rescue resources, and actually the Camrio Dark Team volunteers, is, is his manpower pool. Uh, evacuation notices were given, preliminary and cautionary evacuation notices given, uh, along the west side of the Highway thirty-three, uh, the Ventura, Santa Barbara County line to Pine Mountain Summit. We had about twenty people conducting those evacuations, primarily search and rescue volunteers, augmented by supervisory deputies, uh, acting in a staff capacity. Uh, we also had, uh, personnel assigned to the Live Oak, the Richardson, and the Ventura County Fairground Command Post, to serve as agency representatives. One of the things that we found from experience, when there are multiple jurisdictions or command posts, and you have a myriad of agencies involved, if you don't have people on the ground with decision-makers at all those points, you very quickly are out of the loop. Uh, and so that worked out very effectively for us. Uh, we had a total of twenty-five people working, uh, the response, about three hundred hours logged, as of the twenty-second. Uh, OES was very busy and, and active in this regard, uh, they helped to facilitate the community meetings on the tenth and nineteenth, uh, in the Ojai area, uh, in conjunction with fire and, and Supervisor Bennett. Uh, we also assisted Santa Barbara County, in a mutual aid capacity, providing them eight volunteer team members of the Auxiliary Communication Services, to assist them with the workload in the Santa Barbara, uh, Command Post in the response to the fire. I was on the phone with Sheriff Brown a number of times, coordinating resources from the mutual aid regional coordinator perspective, uh, and we were keeping each other briefed on their efforts and, and what potentially could be happening here in Ventura County. Uh, so some good collaboration, both outside of the county, and certainly within all the responding agencies within. Uh, Ventura County briefings were, were conducted, uh, inter-agency briefings, we had two, with Chief Roper, providing us updates for all the agencies that were involved. Uh, we had daily phone briefings, bringing all the county agencies up to speed on the current progress of the fire, and our responses, and, and their roles. The agencies have already been mentioned by the chiefs, so I won't go back over all of that. Uh, I do want to touch on the public information component that the chief alluded to. Uh, the technology has certainly given us greater capacity in that regard, and we're finding that people are going primarily to internet contacts, because it's, it's time certain, and they don't have to wait for a news broadcast that may not be complete, may be limited by the time of the broadcast, they can go online and find out detailed information. Uh, in the, in the day fire, and the Stechel fire, we, we have worked on and helped to refine that, I think that we did the best job so far in this one, but we're finding that tens of thousands of local residents will go online, they want to know what happened ten minutes ago, fifteen minutes ago. Uh, and the major effort in, in moving towards a joint operation is coordination, because we were putting out information, fire was putting out information, OES had information, there were, there were multiple sources, they were logging on to the websites for the newspapers and the radio stations. Now there's one governmental source of consistent information, that comes out at the same time, with input from all of the primary players, that can be trusted by the public, and can be a counter to either rumors, or, or faulty reporting done through, through the media cycles. And we're finding that people are becoming reliant on that, especially people in hazardous areas like Ojai, that, uh, you know, have more than one event happen in their lifetime, and they're, they're now beginning to identify those resources. Uh, EOC activation was planned, and staged, and scheduled, and we didn't have to do that at this point, uh, but we wanted to be ready in case there was any kind of reversal in our good fortune on the fire. In terms of the emergency proclamation, uh, what I would like to do is ask the board to ratify the proclamation that was declared?
Sheriff, before we do that, let's go ahead and, uh, have a recommendation to, uh, move approval of the oral report of the sacrifice fire, citing six. We have a motion and a second, seeing no objections, that passes, and, and now the ratification, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the proclamation that was declared on August eighteenth, and adopt the attached proclamation that's on your board package. Also recommend that you authorize the proclamation be sent to the Governor and State Office of Emergency Services Director, requesting the Governor to proclaim a gubernatorial declaration for state assistance, uh, that you designate myself, the undersheriff, and the Assistant Director of Sheriff's OES, Laura Hernandez, as authorized representatives for the county, for the purpose of obtaining federal financial assistance under Public Law ninety-three-two-eighty-eight, and that you direct me to report, return to the board on September eleventh, to review the local emergency, and determine whether to extend or terminate the emergency declaration.
Thank you, and, uh, do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Flynn moves, Supervisor Bennett seconds, no objections. Uh, that's passed unanimously, Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, I just had one comment I wanted to make, uh, I don't have a solution for, but, um, people in Ojai, lots of conversations, when we had Santa Barbara officials there, forest, you know, US National Forest people there, our people there, and everybody has different terms for evacuation. Santa Barbara uses evacuation warning, and then an evacuation order. We do an evacuation precaution, and then evacuation recommendation. Um, for the public, that does create some confusion. I don't have a solution to it, and quite frankly, I liked our terms better. I could just imagine Santa Barbara's term evacuation order takes us back to where we were, and everybody goes, well, what's that mean? Does that mean I have to go? And then you spend more time-
Right.
-explaining whether you have to go or not. But, um, it, in the interest of, I see Laura here, in the interest of just saying, there's always areas that you're always trying to look at for, for improvement, there may not be anything that we can do to improve that, but it ended up, it ended up becoming a, a significant sort of side issue, uh, that people talked about and stuff. So anyway, just wanted to get that out there, uh, for the professionals' benefit, to, to be aware of. Again, there, there may not be a solution.
And, and you're correct, and the same thing is true with LA County. LA County still uses mandatory evacuations, which isn't a mandatory evacuation, and so we've, we've tried to thought, thoughtfully craft the best wording, and we're trying to move statewide at adopting consistent wording across the board, but there are political differences between jurisdictions, and they haven't really reached that consensus yet.
If, if, for the general public, I think they would say it doesn't make common sense to have so many different, you know, words being used for the same thing, and, and I agree, to call it mandatory when it's not. And Santa Barbara doesn't call it mandatory, they say it's an order, and, uh, but, anyway, good luck with that one.
Well, the, the one thing that we do do to mitigate that, when we actually do evacuation notices, we explain what the term means, so that there's no confusion in the mind of the resident, that, you know, whatever we term it, we also describe it, so that they're clear about what their, their responsibilities and, and their options are.
It might be good to have that definition on our preparedness things, too, so in advance, we may know, uh, I know what that means.
Right.
Supervisor Flynn, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, you know, you guys do a great job, and so I'm always impressed on the stuff I see, with you all working together, and is there anything, I know you're kind of still in the middle of this, and it's kind of winding down, is there anything else that was seen out of that, that we can help you? Is there any other things you need to make this even work better in the future?
Well, we'd really like to have an unmanned aircraft as part of the area, now that you bring it up.
We had that in the budget.
I'm always ready for that kind of a question.
That's gotta be a salary savings right there, huh?
What comment?
No, no, we, we have been very well supported in the effort of all the participating agencies, and it's really a county-family operation, every time we get involved in this, and, uh, you, you see that when we actually open up the EOC, you'll see faces from almost every agency participating. So, uh, you know, we're, we're working on it, obviously, this was not the magnitude event that it could have been, thanks to the good work by the fire department. Uh, had it been a major effort, we would have been looking for additional resources.
What strikes me, though, and it has for several years, is the planning that goes into this, and the cooperation that goes into it, uh, with various agencies, because you look at some of the agencies, especially at the federal level, uh, you don't always see that working together, and yet, here it is, working, what I could, will consider to be very smoothly, working together, all these agencies, it's just absolutely amazing. It, it seems like it would be simple, but there are, as you just mentioned, political issues sometimes-
Right.
-and people have opinions about what should be done, but when you all come together like that, it's like you have in this fire and others, and other emergencies, it's, uh, you're to be commended, each one of you.
Well, this is, this is the game time for us, and what happens in the game is a reflection of a practice that goes on beforehand. Supervisor Parks, you know, mentioned the strategic planning session that OES is coordinating with all the, all the county family, and, and many of the cities, and other participating organizations like Red Cross. Uh, we, we work at this all the time, so that we get it right when the public really needs us. And so, the coordination is just a reflection of a year-long effort, and every year, uh, by OES and all the involved agencies, on continuing to improve their relationships and their coordinations, because we have to prepare for an all-hazards environment, we never know what's going to hit us next. Uh, but the, the systems and the relationships work regardless of the threat, as long as you keep refining them.
Absolutely.
The next issue, possibly, from all of this, might be the water issue in Santa Barbara County. We've, we've been called upon before to help with the water issue, as you recall, putting on pipeline.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think that's going to be a very severe problem, that they're going to face with Lake Kachuma, the water it supplies, and, uh, the impact it's going to have on slide, slides and mud and everything else.
True.
Yeah, I just want to echo our, our thanks and appreciation, and, and Santa Barbara actually is awe at Laura Hernandez, you know, I was hearing great things when I was there, so just, thank you all, it's a wonderful coordinated effort. It's not out yet, but it, it's looking good for Ventura County. All right, we do have a motion, a second, and a unanimous approval of the ratification, and thank you for coming this morning. We do have one other item on the agenda. Uh, this is item eight, uh, it's a policy matter that I brought forward, and this is in response to what I see as an opportunity to keep a program open, if, uh, we are able to do it. This is a, uh, op, this is a transitional program for emancipating foster youth in Thousand Oaks. We have an apartment building that, uh, an apartment building has been, um, some units have been leased by Interface, uh, they do need to back out of the program, and I'm hoping that we can have a, a period where, uh, of time, so that a new service provider can move in and take on the program. The program does have some problems, I think it needs some more support than what is presently, it's presently receiving, I, but again, I see this as an opportunity to keep the program alive, and then also to increase the support for the program, so we have, uh, a good success rate. Uh, presently, I believe there are four teams that are living in the apartment units, uh, three look like they may have been placed, uh, we still have one that, uh, is there, that would prefer to stay. Uh, the apartment building, I think it can hold ten of foster youth, eight foster youth, and so, um, I think, knowing, uh, that it has had some problems, and putting some more attention to it, I think we can make this program a lot more successful, and actually fill those units, because one of the one resources we don't have in Ventura County is housing for foster youth, so, and particularly emancipating foster youth, that this could be a very successful program, and I want to see it become that. Thousand Oaks doesn't have too many, um, services that Ventura County provides in that area, and it is a wonderful community, in terms of, um, the, the amount of desire of the residents to support people who, when they can. We have Kiwanis and Rotary, and a lot of our service organizations out there that want to help, and, and, as well as a lot of social service agencies out there, nonprofits that want to help. So I'm, I'm hoping that this, uh, unfortunate situation that we're in right now, can actually be made into a, a, a great opportunity to have something that's very viable and working and effective. And I know, uh, I've, they're committed, a human services agency is committed in both trying to expedite a new service provider, and there are at least two that are very interested in taking over this, uh, and I also know that Interface wants to do whatever they can, uh, to transition this, if at all possible, and keep the program going, and, and that's the objective. The amount of money that, uh, is being requested would be to keep it at sixty-seven percent occupancy for sixty days, it's unlikely that, um, that, that amount of funds will be needed, but if it needs to extend beyond that, we can come back to the board. Right now, we need to find out how much, uh, time it will take to do that transition, and to see if Interface can allow for that time. Uh, the request before you is to take money from the contingency, general plan contingency, and, uh, provide that the human services, fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars?
Move the air.
Thank you, you have a motion?
Sure.
And a second. Are there any objections to the motion, Supervisor Long, comment?
Oh, I, I have some questions, um, and, and Interface does a tremendous job, and I, I don't have the background on, you know, other than what I've read, that there's, that they, they need to move out of this program. Um, and I guess, the question I have is that the cost per month, um, just seems, seems like a lot of money per month, for, for, for each youth housed in the program, thirty-eight hundred dollars per month.
And, and my understanding is that also includes the rent of the apartment unit, too, and the services provided?
Okay.
And this isn't, uh, I know the auditor has a question, too, this isn't typically the amount, but this will allow, I think, the opportunity to take on a little bit more this year than we would normally take on, so that we can keep it alive for that small, you know, month-to-month, may, you know, interval, to bring in another, um, agency. And we also have, if you'd like, there are also, you know, Judy Weber is here.
Rivera.
Well, she's been married, she's Weber.
Oh, that's right, she's really married last night, that's right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I guess, another question I would have is, is, I don't know the details on this particular apartment, apartment units, and so it's a private landlord, um, who has been leasing these to Inter, through Interface, for these, for these youth, and is that landlord interested in continuing, uh, a, a relationship, or are we, and have we, are we really, like, close to identifying some partners who might step into this role?
I'll, I'm going to refer to Eric on, on those questions with regards to landlords.
And Eric does have a card in, and he's the Executive Director of Interface?
Yeah, so happy to answer any questions. Uh, we, pretty difficult decision, of course, for, for myself and the board, to, to recommend to, to close the program. We did that, and notified, uh, HSA the next day, that would have been August third, and then have been working with them, and really credit to the, to the Child Family Service Staff for, for working hard on finding really good placements for the four youth that are in the program. Um, so, uh, we, uh, were required to give a thirty-day notice to the, to the apartment complex owner, which we did on August fifteenth, so that would bring us through to the sixteenth of, of September. Uh, they, we, we did get in contact with them about whether there was any possibility of extending that, um, they, um, uh, are having a meeting actually today to consider that, so I don't know whether, whether that's something they'll consider. They did tell us that they have a waiting list for that property, and, uh, and they were cautioning us that they probably moved forward, and, and had other commitments for the apartments, but I don't know that for sure, and, and we'll hopefully hear that, uh, by the end of the day. So that's the situation on the apartments themselves. Um, obviously, the, the, uh, the staff are also looking about three weeks away now, from the end of their position, and so, a staff person, uh, who's primarily the, who is the live-in, uh, staff person in the program, is, um, is also, uh, off interviewing, as, as you'd expect, uh, she would be. We have addressed this, uh, with her, um, but have not, um, uh, heard her back specifically about, uh, her, uh, willingness to, to go beyond that period of time. But I think we're, we're really, um, anxious to, to, uh, assist Child Family Services in whatever way we can to make this transition. I think that, that we have at least a good prospect at this point, that, uh, of permanent family placements for three to four kids. Um, isn't finished yet, still in process- permanent family placements for three to four kids. Isn't finished yet, still in process. But having accomplished that in, in a couple of weeks, I think, says a lot about the child family service staff and what the potential is for, for finding families for kids, which, of course, is our ultimate goal in the first place. So...
Thank you. And then, as to the potential of another service agency being able to step in, we've made some contact with a couple, as I understand.
Yes, we have. We have, there's two agencies that have actually approached the agency and are bringing forth proposals. They will include a timeline for when they could take over the program.
Supervisor Bennett?
I, I do, I guess, I just want to offer two, two observations. One, these, these children have had adults bail on them over and over again in their lives. And right here, as sort of, we're approaching this critical stage for them, what I really see this action is, is try to say, let's do what we can to not create that sense that they're getting bailed on again. And so, it may be more costly than we would want it normally to be. It's, but there's that sense of urgency. So, we need to do, we need to do what we can, what the right thing is for those four children. If we can get them placed, particularly the girl that's trying to go to Westlake, and she's got that all planned and everything else. But I would, I do want to emphasize that there is, there will need to be changes in this program. It's, it's not sustainable as a four-chilled and eight-bed, you know, setup. And I think we all recognize that. So, I just want to make sure that we take this opportunity, that while we're trying to do the right thing for these four children, and, and if we come up with some other provider, we, we actually do that good assessment that I know has already begun, but to make sure that everybody does that good assessment, that we pick Interface's brain about all the things that worked and didn't work. We get together, you know, this is a state program, but it has some unique local, you know, sort of connections to it and stuff. And we just try to make sure that we get this thing back to what it was originally intended. Because I don't think it's actually performing in the way it was originally intended when it was set up, in terms of who, you know, the children that are coming in and all of that. I know we can get that done, but we should, we should view this as, the silver, the silver lining of this is an opportunity for us to, to ratchet this program up. I think overall, this, we're making expanded efforts for emancipated youth across the board. And this is, this should be just one more piece of that.
And, and, I'm sorry, Supervisor Foy, you had your line.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's all right. Trying to understand some of this myself. So, why are we closing this program?
Well, the, this is a program that has not really been properly funded. It gets a state program. And I think there are a couple, a couple of issues for, for myself and for the Interface Board. It's received inadequate funding for years, actually, and each year that there isn't any cost of living increase to the, to the state rate. It gets worse and worse. So, so Interface has actually been supporting the program through its own fundraising for, for, you know, multiple years. And, and I think there's a second point, which I think Supervisor Bennett is referring to, in terms of some of the regulations and the way in which it's built out, because it is a state licensed and kind of configured program. I think there are some key components that, that make it very difficult to achieve the ultimate success that we all want, which is permanent family placements for, for youth and, and youth who can go into adulthood with enough connections in their life to really be successful. We, we definitely have some recommendations, some lessons learned for, that we experience. We're more than happy to, to be part of that. And we've already had conversations with, with, with HSA folks about, about that. So, I think those, so there's some funding, regulatory challenges. And then, Interface really is, is in a, in a, in a process now where we're refocusing our efforts on family strengthening programs that do, do our part to, to prevent kids from, from being removed from their homes in the first place. And then, you know, programs that are able to actively return kids back into a, into a family setting. And so, I think this, this is partially a, a mission re-centering for us. But certainly, the, the hard challenges about the construction and the funding for this program will be there for the next provider as well. And, and I think it is really important, in terms of this being a viable resource for the community, for youth who are emancipating, that, that we, that we do take, take the time and to really consider what, what's the most successful way to do that.
I'm going to have a couple of questions here. Okay, listening to that. I mean, Interface, don't know a whole lot about you, but it sounds like, what I've heard, it's a very good organization. You do good work and all the things you do. And if you've had a difficult time making this go, and you just told us that there's not properly funded, and it doesn't seem like it's properly funded and everything else, at the end of one month or two months, why was anybody else going to be able to take this on and do anything with it either? Aren't we going to be back in the same situation with this?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I think there are, I think there are some key, key components that, that could, could make a difference. One is, there are three, three programs altogether that I think if done, done in concert, would probably afford a better chance of actually making this pencil out and, and putting the resources in to, to make it be more successful. So, that's something that, that I've had discussions with Ted Myers about. And he, you know, I think he's aware of. And, and I think that's part of the, I think just the careful planning at this point, that I know that, that HSA is, is, is doing and going through in terms of, of thinking through the next step. So, I wouldn't say it's a fait accompli, that, that this program's not going to be successful. I think there are components, some of which we control in this county, some of which we don't, that really need to be looked at carefully in order to have more success. It's, it's ironic in a way that if, if in fact, the, the three youth are able to, to go on to permanent family placements, that that will be a percentage of success. That is, that's, that's unusual for the program. And we really need to get to that, where that is more of a usual kind of a success rate. So...
I guess I'm just a, I'm just a little concerned that some of these things, like you said, and you just even brought another point up, we've got to kind of work with the state to get this kind of to work. And I've been involved in this very long, but government moves very, very slowly. And working with the state, at the end of two months, what are all alternatives if nothing's happened?
If, if Governor Schwarzenegger does not use his evil pen, as I believe Supervisor Long indicated, then there is a five percent increase in the RCL rate for out-of-home care for foster youth. So, that would help offset some of the, some of the, some of the costs that, that were, had not been covered in the past. Because there has not been a rate increase for ten years. So, in the current budget, there's a proposed five percent increase for that. What Eric is referring to here is the, the ability that we have right now to restructure the ILP, or Independent Living Program, for transitional age youth. Three years ago, Interface had the ILP contract. It was awarded to a new provider, work-training program. That work-training program also has the THP Plus program, which is the housing program for emancipated youth. So, our thinking is that with time, if we could shore up the infrastructure of work-training program, we'll be able to expand our transitional housing program for youth, so that there'll be a continuum of services offered by one provider. That doesn't preclude other providers from operating housing programs in this county. But I think it's critical that we really create synergy where it's possible and offer a continuum that is going to serve the needs of kids from the time they are fifteen, sixteen years old until they're twenty-four years old. Because that's how long they're eligible for independent living program services.
Right, right. I don't think anybody can argue the need. I mean, I know myself with some kids myself, that, you know, and then all the kids around, and having a, a place for a lot of these young kids is, is a good thing. The other thing I, I wonder, though, as we get into this, we're talking about a nonprofit here. We're talking about moving in. We're talking about setting a precedent, that any other nonprofit in this county can come before us and say, look, we're struggling. We need to have somebody step in to do something for us. How do we deal with that? How do we deal with the idea that, I mean, there's hundreds of them out there, and they're all tremendous causes dealing with people's lives? How do we, as a county, have to deal on that issue that we're asking to take general fund money that, to go to something that's non-government in a sense for us, to a nonprofit, and present that? How do we, how do we go up to the, our, the public, the people who, that we have to be careful with these dollars, what we do? And we saw the fire, the sheriff, and those things. How do we deal with that? I mean, we, we struggle between this issue. I mean, if this is a different government thing, we, we've already made commitments to it. This is coming from a nonprofit. So, next week, or on our next board meeting on the eleventh, we could see a whole bunch of nonprofits here saying, you need to help us like we helped here. So, that's a real concern for me.
No, I, I appreciate and respect that. I would respectfully say, though, that we are the guardians that light them for these children, and we are responsible for their care. So, if we can prevent any disruption to their life and further trauma to them, then it's a worthwhile investment.
Can I, can I try and hand that answer to your question? If, if I could. It's a very legitimate question, so I appreciate that. But I just want to be clear about a couple of things. And one thing that we need to be aware of, this isn't a county program. This is a state program that Interface is hooked up with. And now, Interface is finding themselves with a mission change, and also finding this program has had some problems. If this program would have had seven children in it instead of four children in it, so if we'd had the extra three children, Interface would have been breaking even on the program, correct?
That's not right.
So, I mean, so there's, that's, so it's not like this program can't make it. It's just, this program, for a variety of reasons, hasn't made it, but...
So, are we saying there's not three, another, people out there that need this program?
We're, we're, we're not able to get another three into that program the right way. And that's what has to be, that's what, that's what has to be refigured. And, in other words, you have to refigure this program so that the right children get matched up with this program, so that they go into this program. So, so there is a solution, that's a doable solution, one I would offer. Two, this amount of money that Supervisor Parks has in her letter is not a request from Interface. Interface didn't make any requests of us. So, this isn't like nonprofits coming to us and saying, hey, we need some more money, bail us out, et cetera. So, I don't think this sets that precedent. In fact, what's happened is Interface just came and said, we've tried, we've tried for a long time, for ten years. The state gave us no cost of living increase. And we've covered that gap, and covered that gap, and covered that gap. And we can't cover it any longer. Right? That's what they're saying. Now, I think it's really a damning indictment of the state's willingness to constantly say, we're not going to give cost of living increases, which they're doing in the budget right now, that we'll find for the aged, the blind, the disabled. You know, it's, it's a, it's a cut. It's, it's just an insidious cut, where you don't have the courage to say you're going to cut it, you know, the program. So, the question is, and I think Judy said it specifically, and I've said this all along, when a child gets abandoned by their parents, when that child is six months old, we don't have the choice to say, you know, we just don't have the money for you. You know, we budgeted for a hundred and twelve kids, and we got a hundred and twelve kids, and you're a hundred and thirteen. We don't have that choice. We have to do it. Well, the same thing sort of happened here. These kids are not eighteen yet. These are kids that are under eighteen, so they're ours. We have the ultimate responsibility. Interface is saying, we can't handle it any longer. And we're trying to say, we need this amount of money to supplement the state's funding, so that we treat those four kids properly. We may not use all of this funding, because if they all get put into the families, this is, this would be the maximum that we would need if they all get put into the families. So, I don't see it as a precedent-setting, because they're not coming and asking for, for more, one. And two, I see it as, all of those nonprofits, and we've said this over and over again, that's a good time for us to recognize, all of those nonprofits out there in this county that do this great work are saving the taxpayers' money. Because if those nonprofits weren't doing this, we have to do it. And we'd be spending even more general funds. So, to the extent that occasionally, just if it was your own child, and your own child was at camp, and the camp was funded by the church, and somehow in the middle of the camp, the church said, we're, we're going belly up, you would spend whatever it took to get your kid back from camp safe. And I guess that's how, that's the analogy I would use here. We're not spending whatever it takes. We're, we are allocating a certain amount of money to take care of our kids, because we, they, these, if, if there's any definition of our kids, it's these kids in the foster care program. They don't, we are literally economically, financially, morally, ethically, the parents of these kids.
This, this request is, is really an emergency, as I see it. Am I right?
Yes. And it's also not something that Interface is, you know, desirous of necessarily. I'm just hoping that because if there's a strong enough will, and now look what it takes, it takes Interface being able to pull it off, if they can, for a little bit longer, for our human services agency to expedite to help this new group come in that is willing to do it and see how fast we can do it. And then on top of it, we're hearing when it also takes the apartment owner, it's a group, to say, okay, we can hang on to these vacancies to allow for the program to, to go. I know we, we do have a comment card, and I'll make sure before we get the motion that, that you can speak. But I do see this as, as an emergency thing, but it's also just allowing for the opportunity. And we do have these building blocks in place. As you say, there are restrictions. But to get to where we are right now, you've got an apartment building, you've got some vacancies, you've got the state licensing. We've gone through all these steps. If, if it doesn't work out, there's no more program in Thousand Oaks at this place. We have to start all over somewhere else. And it takes some time to get to where we are. And I think that there are definitely places, that we definitely need places for the foster youth, the emancipating foster youth. And with a successful program, I love the vision that you put out there, that has a lot of support in helping these kids. This, this can be, you know, really a model. And it's, sometimes it takes a crisis like this to get to something better.
I guess I still got some more. At the end of this two months, well, first of all, we're not sure the apartment's going to even be here.
Exactly. This is...
We know that.
Use of the funds are contingent on all, all the yes.
All, all of these things. And so, why am I still trying to understand how we couldn't get seven? We're, I'm just saying, there's only four youth in all of this whole area that even qualify for this program?
Not necessarily who qualify for the program. But in order to qualify for the program, they have to be enrolled in the ILP program. They have to have a plan or be, it's, they're going to be employed, they're going to be going to school, they're going to be doing, so they have a life plan that they're already working, so that they're demonstrating the maturity level to live semi-independently. That's difficult for, for many of these kids, given what their past has been. For those, though, who are on that track, I think they deserve the opportunity. As far as, why isn't it full? It's, you know, it's difficult. Some, some kids don't want to go to East County, even though we know it's probably in their best interest to get out of their current situation and, and see a new lifestyle and a new way of living in a new community. Unfortunately, sometimes when kids are made to go and they don't want to go, then they self-sabotage, and they end up getting kicked out of the program. And so, before we, and then that's just another disruption to their life. So, before we actually make the move, we really want kids who are committed and who are wanting to be there. And that is what the struggle has been. Ideally, we need one of these programs, both in East County and in West County. We know that a majority of our population comes from the West County. So, that has been the struggle.
But the, truly, this is a state issue, not a county issue?
True.
It really is. And we're just having to, what you're asking for is to supplement what the state is supposed to be doing here?
Well, yes. And if, and, and you are correct. If the census had been higher, perhaps they, you know, there would not have been the deficit that Interface was facing for so long. But again, you, you can make a child go there. But if they don't want to be there, then they're not going to stay. And then, there's going to be that vacancy again. And so, it's a, it's a constant struggle.
Right. But we still haven't, I guess you're still not giving me a good answer at the end of this. I mean, I'll be honest, fifteen thousand dollars to me out of this whole deal is nothing. That's, that's not my issue at all. The dollar amount is, is not a big deal. I know it's expensive. There's no question. I mean, I realize what government does versus what these private organizations sometimes can do when they don't have state money is amazing. And, but the whole deal to me is that, are we going down a path that all of a sudden, this didn't work, we couldn't find anybody, it's still not going to be funded properly, we can't do it. So, we're back here again, a month from now, two months from now, three months from, and, and doing something that we probably shouldn't be involved with, and the state should be dealing with this. I'm sure other counties are dealing with some of this stuff.
Yes, other counties are dealing with this.
Yeah, I'm sure they're all dealing with it, because the state is cutting back and cutting back into programs that, but if this, if this doesn't go through today, what happens?
We will still pursue developing a program in West County. We're committed to offering, or East County, and we're still committed to offering...
Are you the only one that wants one in East County versus the West County?
Ideally, we want one in both counties. We want one in both sides of the county. But there, because there are youth from the East County who want to stay in that community as well.
I don't blame them, yeah.
So, it's, we just need more resources in the county. Right now, it's in East County. Ideally, we'd have one in West County. We'll continue to develop the ILP program and the programs and the resources there are for independent, for transitional age youth.
And, okay. I, I, again, I just still think we set a precedent. I think we, we, and I want to use the word, we can't bail out these situations that the state puts these good people that do all this hard work in all the time. And, and again, and when you, I, that's why I have a hard time with some of the programs that the state's involved with. Because if the state's involved and they cut back, then all of a sudden, you have all these people that are affected. And at some point, we can't, we can't, you know, we can't, there's not enough money to, to bail us out. And what is our responsibility? I know sometimes parents don't do what they're supposed to do. And so... I know sometimes parents don't do what they're supposed to do, and so we, as a government, step in at some point, but at what point can we continue?
You raise really good questions, but our responsibility is we're the safety net at the last resort, and that's the issue here.
And we do have, Supervisor Long has a question, our auditor controller, and then I think Supervisor Bennett.
Well, just my comment was that it is a state program in a sense, and we do a lot of state programs where we're the implementing arm of the program. And we're also the recipient of that safety net that says, we provide these services and we go for 10 years at a time without a cost of living increase. And we feel that we have a commitment to take care of our own population, and it crosses the board in human services, from children to teenagers to even adults. This is a national issue. Just coming from the CSAC meeting, Roger Dickinson of Sacramento has been appointed by NACO to chair a task force on a national emancipated foster youth focus. It is, and I asked Roger what they have in Sacramento, and he was very proud to say that they have a 15-unit apartment building that is for emancipated foster youth. You know, it doesn't sound, it's more than what we have. It doesn't sound like a lot, though, for the population of Sacramento. And it's also on CSAC's priority list. No question that we're seeing a greater interest in what can we do, what should we be doing to help these young people, so just a comment there.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes, I'm speaking only to recommendation number three, a technicality. The decrease in the general fund contingency requires the four-fifths vote. But where you move the increase in appropriations is my question. It's my understanding that HSA does not currently have a contract with Interface to provide this service. And so would it not, should it not be an increase in appropriations to special accounts and contributions for a one-time contribution to Interface up to this amount? Or should it be on a purchase order through HSA for very specific services for a specific period of time? And I don't, I look to council to help me on that.
Ma'am Chair, my understanding is this is not to be a donation, but rather it is to, in essence, fund additional services, and that the plan is to do it on a purchase order.
So the scope of that purchase order would define the relationship between HSA and Interface for this service only?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Supervisor Bennett, you wanted another comment?
Yeah, I actually had left this on, but I would respond in response to the comment about bailing the state out. And it is maddeningly frustrating. There are three or four things that are really frustrating about this job. One is sitting in those closed sessions, dealing with those lawsuits, where the lawyers tell us, it'll cost you $500,000 if you don't settle for 100, you know? That is one thing. The other one is bailing the state out. But if the state cut every dollar that they were giving us for foster kids, if they cut every dollar, we would still have no choice. We, sitting here, have the legal responsibility to take care of those kids. So we would legally have to say, we're going to take general fund dollars and use it. That's the first thing we have to do with our dollars, is meet all of our legal mandates, which is provide for the safety and health and welfare of the kids of Ventura County. And if you have a kid that's under 18 that doesn't have parents taking care of them, and the courts have made them ours, then even if the state gives us not a penny, then we bail the state out completely. And the state has done that before. And fortunately, we think that they can't do that as much now as a result of the proposition, you know, that we had passed recently. They can't walk away from that as much. But that's frustrating, but it's the reality of this job.
I could say something. And I agree with you on that. I guess what I'm saying is that there's probably other avenues to do this. We do have, I forget the state response, but we have a moral obligation, I believe, to do, to take care of her. That's why I think you see the good people and the nonprofits who rise up, and they just believe there's a moral thing, that we'll raise money, we'll do whatever we can to help all these different people. I guess my thing is, on the other side of that, though, is there's got to be a lot of other teenage youth out there, and they're being helped some other way. It's just this program itself, we just know it doesn't work, we know it's underfunded, we know it's going to be more difficult, we know it's hard to get people to qualify. So I'm just saying, it's not that what we can do with, I'm not saying, don't take care of them. That's what I don't want anybody to think, we're not taking, there's probably some other way. Because again, if this thing, if they walk out because they can't afford to do it, it's financially burdened them, and there wasn't, the youth would go someplace else and be taken care of. It may not be in the ideal that we'd like to keep this program because it's, you know, unique, but they'd be taken care of, right? We know that. One thing I want to make clear is, we're not saying, I don't want to say we're not taking care of the kids. I'm just saying, in this type of program, that I don't, I don't know if anybody knows the budget, where it's coming, what's going to happen. Suppose it's 5%. I mean, we heard that they got to cut 700 million and whatever out. I'm not sure we're going to see these increases. And a nickel is going to help, but it's not going to probably, if he said, I got 5% right now, it's not going to make any difference to this whole deal. And so I guess that's where I'm going from. And let me ask County Council, I mean, are we setting a precedent in this kind of situation that other people could give us a little bit of a problem?
I don't believe so, Supervisor Foie. I think that you have a situation where you're seeking to, in effect, purchase services from Interface, because Interface has said, we can no longer carry out this state-county program, which we have agreed to do up to this point, so we're going to stop. And all the county is doing is saying, whoops, wait a minute, give us a little transition period, we'll offer you a little more money for services for this brief period. It's not going to be a situation where United Way comes in and says, hey, give us some money too. It's not a gift. It's an effort to purchase additional services, in essence.
If I could, Supervisor Foie, I think we are in agreement in that, I view this as, this is a stopgap thing. And I said it in my comments, the program has to change. So, you know, it cannot just sit here, I mean, if we're back here in December with four kids there and running a deficit, we're making a mistake, right? So that's, so I agree. And I think that that's what, that's part of what we have to do. Besides our motion here, it is, we've made these comments, and our staff is in completing, because staff's already started, they're saying, let's use this opportunity to make a change.
And I guess what I'm saying is that I have a very strong belief, we are going to back here in December if we do this, because it doesn't sound like somebody's going to want to take this on and do it.
You know, if I might, I think if this doesn't work, the program, that program will be gone. There may be something else that will come on down, but we're not going to be back here in December because this didn't work either. Either we've got Interfaces with the ability to hold on for a little bit while we can transition another in, or they cannot. This at least helps that. But I don't think we're going to be back. It's my opinion.
Well, because it sounds like, though, we're already, everything's going on until September 15.
Yes.
That's correct.
So without, no matter what we do, it's on to September 15. Wouldn't we know by September 15, this whole thing's going to go on besides we do anything?
If you'd like to respond.
Well, I guess I'd just say, make a couple of quick comments. I think to Supervisor Long's comment, I think there are other counties, I came from Sacramento, I worked with Supervisor Dickinson and the other supervisors there on innovative programs there, there were family-centered programs that were actually cost-effective and were less costly and more successful than traditional methods. So I think.
I like that you're honest about that. Because I like that you're being honest about that. There's a lot of other things, and we should not keep enabling some of these programs. They're not as cost-effective than.
Well, and that's, you know, I think, program to program, they're all different situations. But I think it is an excellent time to think carefully about, how can we make this program the most successful thing? I would say that, even though it is frustrating to have the state put out partial funding, but the end result for us, however, in our county, is that these kids are in fact turning 18, and they are going out into the community. And if we don't intervene well enough, smartly, and in a timely way, well, they're going to be homeless, they're going to be sitting in front of somebody's business, and all the things that are the other problems that I know you guys are dealing with and that we all don't want to see happen in our community. If for no reason, then that's a horrible thing for a young person to be propelled into as a young adult, as well as all the economic things. So I do think that there are things that we can be working on, and I know that Ted Myers is very interested in improvements in terms of contract. We've talked about performance-based contracting and their interest in moving in that direction. I think that's an excellent motivation towards high quality as the goal, instead of just finding the funding and those kinds of things. So I think we have some active partners here who are going to really work on this together.
And if I may, we do, I'm sorry, we do have a comment from the public that would like to speak, and we can go back if we have some more questions. So we do, we also had a motion on the table, so if we can hold that, and if you would please fill out a blue card after you speak, so we can get your name and.
I'm Claudia Salfin, and I'm a court-appointed special advocate. I'm the one that asked for the funds. This is my CASA kid who lives there. The four kids who live there don't want to leave. They don't want to be placed in foster homes. If there were foster homes available, they would never have gone there to begin with. Now, they've established a life there. I know we can get the four other kids. I've already spoken with the judge, she's agreed to appoint a CASA for each of those kids. And I know that's part of why we don't have eight kids. We need to go to social services, not everybody even, social workers don't even know this program exists in a lot of cases. And if they knew the kid was going to have a CASA, they would be much more likely to move them into this program. These kids will all be gone by June. All I'm asking for is let's not move them around again. She's been in five high schools. I'm going to register her in her sixth one today. And you want to move her? Well, you don't, but they're going to move her again. She doesn't want to move. She loves this program. All the kids there love this program. None of them want to be placed anywhere else. This is desperation, and she has no place else to go. It's very hard to find a foster home for teenage kids. Everybody knows, they're not easy. Which is why, if they each had an advocate, I mean, I talk to her daily, I put my thumb on her, and she's the one that went to the newspaper. They're independent kids, and they are getting ready to become more and more independent. She came from a lockdown, Level A group home, not because she ever did anything wrong, but because there was no place else for her. And that's what she's going to wind up getting sent back to, or to Casa Pacifica. There is no other placement for her at this time. And she's now had a taste of being independent, making her own decisions. It would be very diff, when you put a kid in a group home, their rooms are locked, they're allowed no personal possessions, they share a room with someone else, they can go nowhere. The group gets in the car and goes to take one kid to a doctor's appointment. They have no freedom once. I think she would die if she had to go back. I'm serious. I think her mental health would be completely shot after having these few months in this wonderful placement. And all I was asking for in my letter was that you fund it for a couple of months so that we can set something else up, and she doesn't have to be moved again. These other kids who have been told there's a placement for them, they don't want to move either. Nobody wants to move. And I'm completely convinced that we can get four kids in there and bring this number up if we have these couple of months. I have no doubt whatsoever. Now, I don't know if you know what a CASA is. I'm a volunteer, I'm not paid. I've been in her CASA for six months now, and I was at CASA for another kid for five years, who's a junior in college now. And that's the kind of thing we are, we can get these kids ready for when they're in transitional housing program. You can't do it if they're in a group home.
Well, you certainly are a good advocate.
Thank you.
And I just also want to laud the young woman that she is able to have found a job and looking at starting school. We do, we have Supervisor Foie with a light on.
Yeah, did you have any questions? Because I think I can answer some of your questions.
You said some great things here. If we can get these four other people through, why don't, why haven't we? Because it sounds like.
I think because there was nobody out there doing it. I think kind of Interface had decided that they were going to drop this program, so you weren't going to pick four more kids up and stick them in there and then have to pull them out too.
Did, is that true?
I think that's.
I mean, if this thing had eight kids in it, would you keep this program going because it would be funded enough, or what?
Over the last, over the last three years, we've tracked the occupancy of the program, and the occupancy has hovered between six and seven for three years running. This way before my time, of course, but I'm aware of multiple initiatives with, working with Children Family Services to fund the program. I'm sorry, to make sure that the program was adequately, had enough kids in it. So it's a complex, it's a complex program.
Right.
So I don't think there's an easy solution.
No, I agree, but I mean, going back to her comment, we can get these people, it sounds like you've tried and haven't been able to get them.
Well, he said we were up to six and seven, which is enough to run it, see.
But is it eight? It's not, it's at least eight, right?
That's right.
But what you have to remember is, these kids are constantly phasing out. You're constantly going to have to be moving in new kids. Kids that graduate in January are going to be gone.
You want to make sure it's an excellent program, and right now, it could use some more support. And I do want to note that.
I can say, she's wonderful, isn't she?
Yes, she is a great advocate.
Do you want to tell them a little bit about yourself? I don't know if she's too shy to talk or not.
I don't think so.
She's not usually.
Like she said, I came from a group home. When I left that group home, I had $490 worth of stuff taken from me. I already have an established job, which I plan to transfer if I stay in the area for a year, because I plan on going to college in LA, which we've already had the meeting with my college counselor.
Well, what about a foster home?
If there was a foster home, I would have been there already, and.
And the foster home is not going to teach them the independence they're getting here. This is what's wonderful about this program. Funny things, like they have to show the program manager that they know how to cook three dinners. They get a certain amount of money for groceries, and she'll take them once a month to do the grocery shopping. They have to go the other times, and they have to plan out so that they've got enough money for each meal. They have to, they're very independent, they're going to be ready to be emancipated. She's going to know how to do this stuff. They have to save half their money, they have to have a job, they have to go to school.
And I know, I know this has gotten some attention, obviously, because it was in the newspaper. And from what I've heard, at least four people, four families have called that are interested in wanting to reach out. And I'm just thinking, you know, we have some momentum here, there is an opportunity. I even know, as a member of the United Way Board, they're now looking also at trying to help particularly female emancipating foster youth. So there is a lot of opportunity out there. This motion, to me, is just to allow this program an opportunity to continue if we can do it. It may very well be that we can't do it, and it took some armpit steam to get this here today. And I would like to go ahead, and if there aren't any other further comments, get back to our motion, and I do understand your concerns.
No, I appreciate the comments, I appreciate both of their comments and doing a good job. And I wish you could take all you're trying to teach her to the rest of our kids, it'd be great.
Yeah, that's something I thought of. If we get those eight kids in there, I'll be teaching all of them some of this.
That's right, no.
And hopefully, they will each get a CASA. We have enough CASAs, we have a new training class. And if they have that one adult, that's what's going to make them successful.
Thank you.
We're lucky, let me just make a comment. We're lucky we have you.
Yes.
I love the way you defend people, like you did this morning.
What does a CASA do?
If I ever need an advocate, you're the one.
Very well. He said, I could never want to handle with a CASA. They all have mouths, and they know how to use them.
Supervisor Bennett?
If I could, I also want to compliment you for being a volunteer and doing this. And, you know, we've been out there looking for respite care providers, foster homes, and CASAs are just another part of that. and, and CASAs are, are just another, another part of that. And I guess I want to just use this opportunity to direct staff to have us go out and look for some more CASAs while we're looking for respite care providers and foster care homes. Because it's the teenagers who are really having the problems. And, 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 you know, and certainly being a, you know, a, a strong advocate for this whole emancipated youth program. But I do think that what we have is a very limited motion in front of us, it just was a request for these four children, treat them fair, try to make sure she doesn't change to another high school, right? But I would offer that from up here, we probably shouldn't be trying to sit there and, and think it's, you know, okay, we just need the other four children, et cetera. I'll just give you one example. If you asked, how many sixteen-year-olds want to leave a group home and go into this, you'll get one answer. If you ask our professional staff, how many sixteen-year-olds should be allowed to leave the group home and go into this, you'll get a very different answer. And that's not something that I think we can micromanage up here, and that's what I'm, and that's what makes it complicated. Finding the right children in the right situation as they're ready to do that. And I think that, see, the CASA shaking her head and Judy shaking her head. So that's what makes it complicated, and that's what you need professional staff for. And so it's, when you said, when Eric said, it's complicated, it is complicated, and I, I wish it was just that easy to say, do we have any four, we have four volunteers? Because we'd have a lot more than four volunteers in that situation. But it has to be a seventeen-year-old who is responsible enough that they can live in that situation on their own and that won't abuse the, the situation, because those children have to be removed, put back into group homes if they do the wrong things in that independent living situation and stuff. So I have a great appreciation for how complicated that is, and I just want to make sure that got said too. We're only focusing on a limited thing here, I don't want our comments to deflect our staff from doing the, the best staff work possible to try to get this thing to the right-
I, I would just have to ask-
Could I please finish if I could?
Yeah.
If I could, if I, to get this to the right program, the right transition that we need to get this program into. And I think you've acknowledged that, thank you.
I'd just like to make a point, use the word limited motion, I, I made the motion, it certainly isn't limited, okay? It's kind of, it, it's, it's for a very special case here.
And I, and I just want to throw in a good word for East County. While you may have more children in the West County, and they may be more comfortable in their environment, and it may be, and that, that's a strong reason why they're there. And there's also a lot to be said be, to take them into a different environment, and we have a great one out there.
Absolutely. I agree with you a hundred percent.
So with that, we'll reinstate the motion in a second. Are there objections to the motion? One objection?
No.
Okay, so the motion passes four, one will Supervisor Foy oppose. And we've spent more time on this issue than we did the emergency proclamation, but it is, it was very enlightening.
And it was worth every minute.
It was very enlightening, and I think it helps our board and the public to understand some of the complexities.